Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the March 8th Salina City Commission meeting.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Angel.
Here.
Commissioner Arbke.
Here.
Commissioner Jennings.
Here.
Commissioner Peck.
Here.
Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll have our citizens forum. This is where anyone from the public can come and speak on any topic not on today's agenda. Just come forward to the podium and give us your name and address. Seeing that there is no one, we will proceed to awards and -- there are no awards and proclamations or public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time, so we will proceed with the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of March 1st, 2010. Item 6.2, award of contract for the 2010 through 2012 Utilities Department mowing services to Ponton Construction Incorporated in an annual fee of $32,491.63.
Is there an item that a commissioner wishes to take off of the consent agenda? If not, only a motion.
May I move we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Motion passes 5-0.
May I move that we add an executive session onto our agenda today?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we add an executive session onto our agenda today. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Motion passes 5-0, so we will have that executive session at the end of our agenda today. Moving right along then onto development business.
Item 7.1, application number Z92-6A, requesting an amendment to -- of a PC-5 district to allow a new drying equipment and overhead doors to be added to their automatic car wash facility on property addressed as 215 West Crawford Street.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, I understand from reviewing the copied versions of the packet that there was a glitch in the collating of the packet and that these two items were intermingled, so what you might find at your places there would be two printed out versions of items 7.1 and 7.2 that were copied in the correct order. And the two items, 7.1 deals with the location on Crawford and Ninth Street and 7.2 deals with the location at Iron and Ohio. And we have provided you a little bit of background on both, and that both of these items were sensitive items for the community and for neighboring property owners at the time that they were proposed. In particular, the one on the corner of Crawford and Ninth Street, which I think aside from the Central Mall was the most controversial rezoning case that I can recall in the city of Salina. And there was a great deal of sensitivity at the time, both about traffic but also about noise and the sensitivity about vacuums and about beepers and the handheld car wash and things of that nature. So, these properties were both purchased from Green Lantern Convenience Store by Casey's General Store, and they approached staff about modifying the facility to add dryers or hot air blowers to the two automated facilities. And we were interested to gather more information about how those would function and how they would be located and also what they would mean from an impact of additional noise over what the operation is there today. And so what they're planning to do at the Ninth and Crawford facility is to take the southernmost bay, which is the automatic drive-through car wash bay. They want to propose overhead doors on both of those and that they are going to basically remove the inner operations and replace those and as part of that incorporate hot air blowers into that. That will do two things. One, by having the doors, they'll be able to keep the bays at a warmer temperature and avoid currently without the closed doors, the water has to run constantly to keep freezing from occurring. So they hope with the overhead doors being able to be closed in the wintertime that they can keep the temperature more uniform. The other thing that having the doors does is it helps damper the sound. And so attached in your packet is a report on the decibel levels of the blowers and how that would be impacted by having the door there and having that closed. And in both these cases, it just so happens that the automated bays are the bays that are closest to the nearby closest residents, so that's why that was looked at closely. But they are showing ranges from 20 feet to 40 feet at between 64 and 70 decibels. And that, from a noise standpoint, would probably not be much different than just the background noise you would get from Crawford or Ninth Street or any other heavily traveled street from engine noise and things of that nature. And so as part of this, all the owners of property within 200 feet of this location were notified. There was a public hearing before the Planning Commission. We did not have anyone appear and speak at that meeting on Ninth and Crawford except for Representative Casey's. And at the conclusion of the hearing, the Planning Commission recommended that the change be approved primarily with the condition that the rear doors of the car wash bay remain closed when the car wash and hot air dryers are in operation. And they requested that the -- they have the ability to keep the door open on the inward side because in warm weather that helps dry the area out and keep mold and other things from developing in there. Let them air dry since unlike the Green Lantern washes, they won't be running water all the time. So, again, this was brought before the Planning Commission as a public hearing item because of the sensitivity of the neighborhood to additional noise. And neighbors were notified, didn't express any concern, so the Crawford and Ninth Street location comes to you with a recommendation of approval. And so, again, this is the southernmost bay facing Ninth Street that would be converted. With that, I'd be happy to address any questions.
Questions to Mr. Andrew.
Quick question. Dean, I know the intent of this is that, I believe the intent is that the overhead, the automated doors would be down while the car wash operation is going?
The rear one.
The rear one, okay. Just wonder if, even though we -- that's clearly the intent, that whether or not language should reflect that, just to make sure.
When you're referring, okay. The condition that the Planning Commission had was that the rear doors, the automated car wash bay should remain closed when the car wash and hot air dryers are in operation. And that would be incorporated into the ordinance so that Casey's and anybody else would know that that was a condition.
I see that now, number two. Okay, thank you.
And, again, Casey's is an Iowa company. They're relatively new to the car wash business, but all of their car washes in Iowa are completely enclosed by doors, just mostly because of the freezing issue. If you drove a car out of a car wash in Iowa, the water would freeze instantly, so they're all equipped with dryers so that when you exit the wash, you're dry.
But the reason we're having this discussion today is because they make such a loud noise that that is where you had to address that problem. Is that correct?
Right. In the case of this location, even the model, the type, the decibel level of vacuums and beepers were scrutinized closely and because it was a sensitive issue and we were adding another source of sound, we thought rather than administratively approve this, there should be an opportunity for the neighbors to know about the change and have an opportunity to comment.
They were all sent letters?
Yes.
Okay. How long ago was that?
That hearing occurred in February with the Planning Commission, and they would have gotten letters roughly the end of January.
Okay.
Looking at it, on the front door, which is going to be the street-side door that we see there, right?
Yes.
How far away is that house next door?
It's 15 feet from the side wall of the house to the fence, and I think it's roughly equivalent. I guess John could do a rough measurement for you, but I'd be guessing it's 25 to 30 feet.
Okay.
What have you come up with, John?
I've got 30 feet.
30 feet.
Okay. So it would be somewhere around 81. If it's 30, with the door open at the entrance, we're around 81.
Right, but the blowers are going to be located near the exit, so the last thing that occurs before you come out is you go through the blowers.
Is it 81 at the entrance, or is that wrong then?
No, that is correct.
Is it 81 at the entrance now?
No. This is what it would be if you had blowers.
Okay. And I understand that. So the, that front door has the potential, even though the blowers are on the back, the noise emitted from the front door is going to be 81.
Yes, compared to 67 if the door was closed.
And there wasn't anybody that came forward with any concerns with that? I mean, I can see the back doors, the door down, were 60, 68. That's a pretty low sound. As you said, it's going to be less than the traffic that's right out in front of the house. That's the only point, I'm not opposed to what's being proposed right now, but that's my only point of concern is then that homeowner is the one that would stand a chance after the installation's done to say, well, I've got 80 decibels all the time right next door to me.
And one solution, since it would be equipped with doors, if it becomes an issue or problem, then that could be modified to require that the front door be closed also. The Representative Casey's particularly requested that, they said in the winter months, both doors will close while it's in operation or even between cars, but in the summertime they asked that the front door be allowed to be open when not in use because it would allow that to dry out because it is going to be almost an entirely different system from what Green Lantern has in there today.
Well, and Dean, is that car wash in operation, the hours that Green Lantern, or excuse me, that Casey's is open?
Yes.
Which?
Whenever the convenience store is open, the car wash is open.
7:00 AM is really a 7:00 or 7:30, I'm guessing?
Mm-hmm.
Dean, this references the decibel reading from the manufacturer, so I'm presuming that Casey's, for example, didn't have any type of decibel reading where they actually walked out, you know, from the, say, the front or the rear within those, the number of feet here and actually measured it. Maybe they did, maybe they didn't, but I guess my question is, a lot of this also has to do with how the sound disperses out of the building. And when you're on the side, the question really is, is do we think that the sound would disperse out to the side property in the same way it would disperse out to the front or out, or from the rear?
Yeah, I, this is done by the manufacturer, not done at any one of their locations. And again, this is, this is new territory for Casey's in all regard, the item, the location at Magnolia and Ninth Street, Casey's doesn't own anything like that anywhere. So they are, they are just getting more acquainted with the car wash business. But our assumption in looking at that was that these are the noise that was coming out of that opening and that directly to the south, you would have that substantial brick wall that's going to buffer the sound going to the south. I think we were more concerned about noise on Highland to the east because that's where the opening is. And we believe that at least by having the door closed on that side, that will provide more of a buffer there. But that the wall would reduce some of the sound projecting to the south.
Additional questions? Thank you. I'll open it up to public comment.
Does Casey's have a representative here?
Yes.
Could I ask you a question then? Would Casey's have, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Jeff Rosner, Jamaica, Iowa.
Would Casey's have any opposition if this was done and there was a complaint with that neighbor next door to looking at closing that door as Mr. Andrews had suggested earlier? Is that, is that option open or would there be any reason right now to say, we've got some concerns about being able to do that down the road?
We would have no problem looking at that. The main concern we had is just that's that much less wear and tear on the motors and the operation of those doors during the summer, so if we can keep that, so that was our main concern. But Casey's wants to be a good neighbor, so if we're having a problem and if we would need to do that, not all the washes will actually have the dryer. That will be the top wash option. So it won't even be going for all the time. So generally, we're not going to have an issue. Like I said, normally we have these that are others, so we were kind of surprised that this was an issue, so we're learning as well.
It's good to know you'll be willing. Thank you.
Any other public comment? If not, I'll bring you back to the commission for action.
Mayor, if I may?
Certainly.
I'm sorry, just a quick point of clarification. I probably need to direct to Mr. Andrew, if I may. Dean, what would be the thought on, if the commission wanted to go that direction in terms of the front door as well, would we, how would we address that complaint consequence situation?
Well, I guess there were two options to address it for the record. One, the original staff recommendation, we were mostly concerned about the rear door, and we had originally made a recommendation that both doors be closed during operation, but the Representative Casey's expressed concern about particularly the summer months leaving that open, plus the fact that the dryer is not going to be used on every operation. So the choice would be to modify that condition or to make it clear in any motion that would approve this ordinance on first reading is to make that clearly reflected in the minutes so that if there was a issue with that down the road, we would probably through correspondence to Casey's, use that as an attachment and say, as was discussed and agreed upon at
So, Mr. Binkston, we need to specify that in the motion?
Well, if that's the way the commission wishes to go, I wasn't presupposing that entirely. I just wanted, expected that might be something we wanted to work out in advance if that's where the commission wanted to go with this.
Regarding the operation of the doors.
Well, and also I suppose, is it also a question then, Mr. Andrew, of who would have standing to make the complaint? Are we looking specifically at that neighbor to the south or would anyone else be in that picture?
Yes, we were viewing that the people on Highland would be most impacted by the door, the rear door on the east, and the only party that would really be affected by the door, the entrance door, would be the people directly south on Ninth Street. But if we wanted to limit it to a specific party or parties, then we'd have to identify who that complainant would be now.
Dean, given this is a zoning action, I guess one question is how we nail down the language that would actually trigger the opening up of the issue. For example, if we say simply, let's say, a complaint of a residential property owner or of a property owner for that matter, probably all of them are residential, but if that's the case, that could be very subjective. And then that, so do we trigger that simply to open it up or also to require officially by the zoning, in essence, the zoning code is applied here, the remedy? Or do we look at it from the perspective of decibels within the periphery of the building, which is a little more easy to measure from a performance perspective? I just want to be clear, we don't have a floater out there because we typically don't have floaters with the zoning action in which you just kind of can maybe come back and then there's a question about what can be approved or required and what can't be required.
I think I can clarify my concern and we can see then if we need to clarify. I just wanted to make sure from Casey's representative that if you do have somebody that's complaining about the noise, that they'd be at least amenable to try to be a good business partner and do something about it. I'm not overly concerned to the point that I think, that I would propose a lot of complex changes to what's being proposed to us. I just wanted to hear that our business partner would be amenable if there was a big problem down the road.
Okay, so you'd be comfortable with the language is drawn up then?
Absolutely.
That sounds easy enough.
We didn't want to make it that difficult.
Yeah. In answer to your
Mr. Binkston.
question on a general basis, so it would be easier if, instead of attributing it just to a complaint, to say if the, if it turns out that the decibel level at the south property line is above a certain amount, that would be a lot more enforceable than just a subjective complaint.
Commissioners understand or okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Andrew. Then again, I'll bring you back to the commission for action.
May I move we adopt ordinance number 10-10537, allowing Casey's General Stores their new drying equipment and overhead doors to be added to their automated car wash facility at 215 West Crawford Street here in Salina.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt on first reading ordinance number 10-10537, application Z92-6A filed by Casey's General Stores requesting an amendment to allow new drying equipment and overhead doors to be added to their automated car wash facility at the property addressed as 215 West Crawford. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Motion passes 5-0. Item 7.2, application number Z98-11A, requesting amendment to a PC-5 district to allow a new drying equipment and overhead doors to be added to an automatic car wash facility on property addressed as 1100 East Iron Avenue. Sub item 7.2A, first reading ordinance number 10-10,538.
Mr. Andrew.
This was also a case that involved a rezoning, and we've highlighted a lot of that background for you. There was some sensitivity, again, on this case about where the automated car wash bay would be. And again, it ended up at the end and it just happened to be the location that is probably closest to, the closest nearby residence to the east and the southeast. So there, again, was the same sensitivity about noise and the need to damper that. But again, we're looking at the easternmost bay, close to Connecticut there with homes across the street and to the southeast, and the characteristics of the unit are identical to the unit that's proposed at the Crawford location. And again, just so everybody understands, it would be in that easternmost location. And the same concerns were expressed. It seemed like the closure of the door at the south end with the homes across the alley to the south would have the greatest impact for dampening noise. And so a similar condition was proposed there where the rear doors of the automated bay remain closed while the car wash is in operation. This was included in the same public hearing before the Planning Commission, and we also had no one appear and speak on this issue as well. And so the Planning Commission recommended to you that this request be approved also.
Thank you. Don't think we have any questions. I think we, this will be really easy. So is there any additional public comment? If not, I'll ask for city, I'll ask for city commission action, please.
May I move we adopt ordinance number 10-10538, allowing new drying equipment and overhead doors to be added to Casey's General Stores automated car wash facility at 1100 East Iron Avenue.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt on first reading ordinance number 10-10538, application Z98-11A by Casey's General Stores requesting an amendment to allow new drying equipment and overhead doors at their automated car wash facility addressed as 1100 East Iron. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Motion passes 5-0.
Item 7.3, application number Z10-3, requesting amendment to Chapter 42, Article 4, Section 42-60 pertaining to home occupations to allow window tinting as a permitted home occupation in residential zoning district and to allow the Board of Zoning Appeals to approve automatic window tinting as a home occupation that can be conducted in a detached garage. Sub item 7.3A, first reading ordinance number 10-10,539.
Mr. Andrew.
This is an item that was also discussed at the Planning Commission's February 16th meeting. This is a text amendment application, was filed by property owners and citizens within the city, and it deals with what we call the city's home occupation regulations. And since 1981, there's been an allowance to do a small-scale business in a person's home on a very limited basis. And the idea being that if it is, if it's low-key and not readily noticeable to neighbors and doesn't result in physical changes to the property, it generally fits in. And the two most common that we have in the city are residential daycare of a small scale and there are a number of single-chair beauty shops that operate out of homes around the city. And so as a general rule, the home-based business is supposed to be conducted inside the applicant's home. In 1989, there was a set of amendments that was recommended by the Planning Commission, adopted by the City Commission, and it adopted some performance standards for home businesses that would provide a better enforcement vehicle if there were noise or traffic or activity-related complaints about home-based businesses. It did allow for conduct of businesses on a detached garage or accessory building if the Board of Zoning Appeals reviewed that and neighbors had an opportunity to be notified. It did put limitations on the hours that those could be conducted. Two items specifically that were added at the time was small engine repair and allowance for bed and breakfasts. And since that time, there have been about five bed and breakfasts that have been approved in homes around the community. I think every one of those was open for a while and has closed. There was one business operated out of a garage that did small blade and lawnmower repair, and then there's one that was approved to do golf cart engine repair, and those were businesses that were approved outside of the primary residents themselves. But one constant that's been in place at least since 1989 is that anything that is automotive-related is not permitted and is generally either not authorized through a certificate or has been prosecuted if it's found to operate. And those would include, could be tire repair, could be frame straightening, could be painting, pickup bed liner installation. Those types of things have not been permitted in residential neighborhoods and have been dealt with if they have been found there. This particular applicant has filed an application to amend that broad prohibition on automotive service-related businesses to carve out an exception for auto window tinting. And his contention is that auto window tinting is very, very precise and delicate process that does and delicate process that doesn't involve a lot of noise or some of the other side effects that you'd have with other installations or types of automobile service. And he has a property on Sherman with a detached garage where he would like to conduct his window tinting business. And unless the ordinance is amended to allow that, carve out that exception, a home occupation certificate could not be issued for that type of building or addition to a building. And so, if this text amendment were approved by you, it would allow this applicant or any other residential property owner to apply for a home occupation certificate to do auto-window tinting in their residential garage. Under this process, that would first have to be reviewed and approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals, and neighbors would be notified ahead of time of any proposal. But that is the best way I can describe this request, is that we have a general prohibition on anything that is automobile service-related or display and sale of cars, body repair, painting, I said, installation of bed liners for pickups. Those are all different things that have occurred in residential areas over the years and have been dealt with or prosecuted in some manner, including this particular business as well. So, I'd be open to any questions you have about the particular application.
Questions of Mr. Andrew?
Yeah, this one may be best answered by the man that I got in trouble just a little while ago. I'm going to assume that probably a lot of these automotive things were just out of the sheer nature of, if you're going to do bodywork, then you're probably going to have a string of vehicles inside, and then outside work's going to stack up and it's going to look like a business. Is that a correct assumption? From the things that you said, has it been relayed in the past, Mr. Andrews, that that is going to adversely impact the aestheticness, the looks, and the parking, and so on?
Well, the rationale, and you can go through item by item and identify things if you are
I don't necessarily
Yeah, if you're painting vehicles, you can have overspray that could get on neighbors. If you're doing bodywork, you can do welding or make lots of noise, which will annoy your neighbors. If you display cars for sale at your home, you clutter up either the street or the yard or the driveway. And then, the overarching thing is generally the comings and goings of numerous vehicles that are getting attention or in some state of being worked on. And in the case of bed liners, we had a case where somebody had, I don't know, five or six bed liners stacked up outside their garage that people took notice of and didn't find it very attractive and things of that nature.
And I guess I can see that. So, my question is, this sounds like something that happens in a fairly short amount of time to a car. I can see a car getting dropped off at lunch and picked up at night or whatever. Is there a way that we can amend this to say that no vehicle, that the applicant will work with their customers to ensure that no vehicle is left more than 24 hours, or is that part of it, and I haven't gotten there?
Well, there are two approaches to that. They had some specifics that they were proposing that, in staff's mind, made more sense to address on a case-by-case basis, if you actually had a case in front of a Board of Zoning Appeals, to indicate limitations on how it would operate. But on the application that they filed themselves, they were recommending that services had to be arranged by appointment, and so scheduled that traffic is not more than one car at a time or three in one day. So, the options would be to include that in any sort of ordinance amendment, or if you had a case that got before the Board of Zoning Appeals, have that as an enforceable condition under which the certificate would be issued. But either way of those could be done. It just seemed like this, these items here were very specific to this particular business, but if you wanted to take that language about number of patrons, one car at a time or three in one day, that would be one way to address that.
It looks like the special provisions takes care of no vehicles or equipment or anything being left outside, if we adopt it.
Right. We would not expect there to be any vehicle except inside the garage being worked on and having it be picked up and not have any vehicles around the premises where the installation work was being done.
Mr. Andrew, in reading all of this, has, for the past six years, he tried to get this passed, and he's been denied, and with the change, I was trying to make sense of the correspondence.
It's 11 years?
Oh, 11? I added the, did the math wrong. 11 years. I stand corrected. So, is it with the changing of commissions that he is bringing this up again to see if we would make a
It was
Change?
It was a meeting that we had where we were asked to draw a roadmap for how this could be accomplished, and basically, there is a restraining order injunction, however you want to put it, from municipal court, that is restraining Mr. Newman from operating his business in any residential location in the city of Salina. That is under the current ordinance. So, the only way to get around that and to legally allow it would be to change code itself and to carve out an exception for that.
But he hasn't asked a prior commission to do that. This is the first time he's come before the commission to ask that the ordinance be
That is correct.
Modified.
Yes, during that timeframe. Most of the other time was spent in municipal court, and municipal court is not in the business of changing codes, just applying them.
So, is this going to open up a can of worms for other people that wish to do this sort of thing in their neighborhood?
Well, if it's very narrowly drawn to auto-window tinting, then it's not creating a big exception. It's still leaving the other parts of that in place. It's not like it would be allowing pickup bed liner installation or things like that, but, I mean, this is not a text amendment that staff would initiate, because it's a lot cleaner just to say, any automotive service or repair-related business is not allowed.
Not permitted, okay.
And so, but that ease of enforcement is not a reason, or making it easy for staff is not a reason not to do something, but it is an exception, I guess, that we're seeing as being narrowly drawn for one particular type of installation, and that's auto-window tinting, which is different than painting or repair or
Correct.
Those other things. But this is the correct forum to argue that, not municipal court.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. I'll open it up to public comment. If not, I'll bring you back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 10-10539, approving the application Z10-3 filed by Dylan Newman, requesting an amendment to chapter 42 of our, section 42, article 4, pertaining to home occupations that allow for window tinting as a permitted home occupation at a residential zoning district, allowing the Board of Zoning and Appeals to approve automotive window tinting as a home occupation that can be conducted in a detached garage.
Second? It's been moved and seconded to adopt on first reading, ordinance number 10-10539, the application as presented. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes 5-0.
Mayor, I move we recess into executive session for 15 minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege for the reason the public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters, and reconvene at 4:55 PM.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that we recess into executive session. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes 5-0. Do you expect any action?
We do not.
We are in executive session. Thank you.